You still can't.
I've been talking for not long this afternoon.
Yeah, all right, good afternoon.
Well, that one's working.
Yeah, okay, all right, good afternoon, welcome to the Teleahoma Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting, July 21st, 2025, Chairman Paul Schwer and I'm here to call this meeting to order, determination of a quorum, we have five members present out of seven, so given, and the sixth member just walked in the door, so welcome, Mr. Comer. Yeah, we do have a quorum with six members present. Mr. Rice is absent and we knew that was going to happen, so good deal. We'll wait on Mr. Comer and then we will move on to item number three. And you can stay standing if you'd like, Bill.
You're blessed.
Anyway, Mr. Hall, listen, please.
I would like to testify as United States of America, into your republic, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Item number four, read and approve the minutes from the June 16th agenda. So I will entertain a motion on the minutes as written.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Sellers.
Second.
Second from Mr. Seaborn. All in favor of the minutes as written, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion passes six to zero. Item number five, general public comments for items not on the agenda, if anyone from the public would like to comment on anything within the purview of the Planning Commission, but is not identified on tonight's agenda, please come forward now, you'll be allotted three minutes of time. All right, seeing none, I will close general public comments, reports from commissioners and staff, Mr. Luthy.
I'd just like to advise the commission that I have made several revisions to our sign ordinance that was requested to be by multiple citizen groups as well as aldermen and commissioners, those modifications have been completed, I'm going to take that signed ordinance and print it out and pass it around to a couple of our businesses and other individuals that would be impacted by that sign ordinance, give them a chance to field comments and give them a chance to read it before it's brought before you, so next month you will get the sign ordinance and a chance to review that and make comment and then it will go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, their certification.
All right, thank you, Suthi, anything for the commission?
Any more on the comprehensive plan or the subdivision regulations?
Yes, I met with the mayor and the chairman to discuss the comprehensive plan and we're going to start moving forward with that, I still need probably another month to refine the comprehensive plan that we had done and the 2045 plan and get all of those prepped for the presentation before the commission, so you will be seeing that at the August meetings, I'll have that before you, my goal is to have the comprehensive plan maybe not finished, but at least at a point where we're getting ready to vote on an actual plan by the end of the year.
All right, thank you, thank you, all right, I'll take this moment to add an item to the agenda under old business, it's a continuation from last month, it is 198 Gee Road, the finer, the minor final plot, UGB property zoned RS1, 1.2 acres in the Coffee County map, parcel 091, parcel 13.00, applicant name is James David Russell, so I'm going to add that under old business in number eight, and at this time I would like to, as a new formality for the commission, do the approval of the agenda, so as the agenda is written with that motion, do I hear, I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hall.
Is that proper?
I think so, or you can say motion to approve with the addition.
Okay, okay, yeah, you, this is a new, but anyway, so we had a motion for the agenda with the addition added from last, from old business from last time, from Mr. Sellers and then Mr. Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, that motion passes six to zero, the agenda is approved. All right, so, moving on to old business, 198 Gee Road, or Gee Road, I think, this was left over, there was lacking a signature from TDEC and the land developer, we have the signature now, I'm actually going to just open this up for the staff report for Mr. Luthy and we'll go from there.
Yeah, this project, you all got to see this one, this one came through last week, or last month, pardon my mistake, is creating two legal, two new legal lots of record, all contained within the urban growth boundary, these new lots would remain within Coffee County but must be approved by the Municipal Regional Planning Commission, this one had one minor comment from the city engineer to provide a five-foot public use easement along the frontage of both lots, and staff recommended approval of this final plat with the included Development Advisory Committee comment, the reason why this one was delayed from the last meeting was Mr. Charbonneau at TDEC is required to sign the approval of the location of the drain fields for the septic system, they had not gotten that signature yet and TDEC does not appreciate it when lots get approved prior to their approval of those drain field locations, because sometimes, you know, if they get approved and then they go in and apply, sometimes houses can get put in the wrong spot, interferes with the drain fields, so this, these drain fields have been approved and they have obtained that signature from Mr. Charbonneau, so now they're able to bring that back before the board and get that approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. All right, with that, I have a motion for the approval of 198 Gee Road.
Motion to approve subject staff comments.
Motion from Mr. Hall. Second.
Second.
Second from Ms. McGee. Any discussion on this? All right, now call the vote, all in favor of the plat as amended and still with staff comments, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, all right, motion passes six to zero, and that was Sellers?
This may.
Holland.
Oh, Holland, okay, thank you. All right, all right, moving on to new business, these are public hearings, subdivision plats, Moore West Deckard Street Minor Subdivision Final Plat, proposed final plat to create two new lots of record at 208 West Deckard Street, and the applicant is Mr. Joss Moore, I'd like to invite the applicant forward at this time to speak on this parcel.
Yeah, just trying to get two lots where there was one, I think it was a little tight, it was about 2,000 feet short, so getting that rezoned will allow us to get two in there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite anyone from the public to speak on this if they feel so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to staff report, Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, the item we have before you is for a subdivision of a lot that is currently zoned R3, in May, this went before you for comment on its rezoning, and then in June, it went through its first and second reading at the Board of Mayor and Alderman and got approved, this lot had been rezoned from R2 to R3, once it got rezoned to R3, it was now able to be subdivided and remained compliant with our zoning ordinance, and so the applicant is now seeking to subdivide that lot as they intended prior to rezon.
All right, thank you, Ms. Luthy, motion?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Oh, motion to approve, subject staff comments.
I'll second. All right, motion from Mr. Hall. Second from Seaborn. All right, any discussion on this? Close discussion and move to the vote, all in favor of the Moore West Deckard Street Minor Subdivision Final Plat, subject staff comments, aye?
Aye.
And abstained, motion passes six to zero. Item number two, GH Custom Homes Hickory Hills Road Minor Subdivision Final Plat, proposed final plat to create two new lots of record located at Hickory Hills Road, Coffee County tax map, the parcel, or the applicant is Greg Holder, Mr. Holder, I'd like to invite you to come forward and speak on your property. Or representative.
Yeah, I'm not Mr. Holder, I'm Andy Bobo with North Cut and Associates, Mr. Holder would like to take the five-acre parcel on the corner of Avoca Lake and Hickory Hills Road and split it into two.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this at this time, to come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, Mr. Luthy, staff report.
This one is another minor subdivision located at Hickory Hills Road, again dividing one property into two, the only real articles of note for this one is that this is another property within our UGB, so we are required, since we are a Municipal Regional Planning Commission, we are required to review subdivisions within our planning region, and our planning region has been defined as the urban growth boundary that lies within Coffee County, so that's why you're seeing these items come before you even though they're not within the city limits of Tallahassee.
All right, thank you. Motion for the commission.
Are you looking for motion? Oh, motion to approve, subject staff comments.
All right, motion for Mr. Hall, second.
Second.
Second from Ms. McGee. Any discussion on this one? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll close that and call the vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, all right, motion passes six to zero. Nine B, item number one, site plan, NHC Healthcare Facility Site Plan, a site plan to construct a new NHC healthcare facility located at 1339 Cedar Lane, applicant is National Healthcare Corporation, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time and tell us about their site plan. Sorry to recognize.
Good afternoon, my name is Gary O'Brien with LaBella Associates, with the civil engineers for the project, I've got with me Michael Lamont, also with LaBella, and Mr. Andy Clark with National Healthcare Corporation as the owner-operator, and Mr. David Hedinger with DMK Development Construction, their development partner on this project, so got the team here to answer any questions you may have, technical or otherwise, so, and Cedar, it does say Cedar Street in the, in the agenda, but it is Cedar Lane, I guess, I think you said Cedar Lane when you read it off, too, don't know if that matters at all, but.
We can make a little note. Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's on the agenda item, too, it's, okay, all right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite the public to come forward at this time to speak on this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to the staff report, Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, we have the new NHC healthcare facility going in at 1339 Cedar Lane, not Cedar Street, pardon that, it is for the creation of a new healthcare facility, this one will be going north of the existing healthcare facility, and this one will be there to supplement that facility, that existing facility will remain, and this location will be providing, I believe it's for Alzheimer's and memory care, this will be a more specialized facility for those types of patients and will support the existing NHC healthcare facility. We do have a couple of comments from our Development Advisory Committee, the Public Works comments are included with the City Engineers' comments, City Engineers' comments are asking for them to extend the proposed front sidewalk in the right-of-way to the north property line, show the existing contours of the existing ditch in the right-of-way that they propose 24-inch RCP is tying into, in order to confirm that's not draining over Cedar Lane, on the north side of the south driveway, there is an existing drainage swale flowing south and needs to route into this 24-inch pipe network, or a new driveway culvert provided, this existing 18-inch RCP has flow from existing right-of-way swale on the north side of this pipe and needs to round this pipe network, stuff pipe out to the north to pick up the swale, list all storm structure type TC and IE elevations, and then providing the storm water detention maintenance agreement and LTMP for recording and the hard copies dropped off at the codes building, all of those comments were deemed from Scott and Jim to be satisfactory as conditions of approval, I spoke with Scott about this at the DAC meeting last Wednesday, and he doesn't feel that any of these would be substantial enough to require site modification, these can be cleaned up when they submit for their storm water permit.
And we're happy to do that, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No worries. And ER pud did notify them that there is a four-inch pressurized gas main that runs through the northern side of the development, they're in contact with ER pud regarding that one, and then I did speak with Bradley Zill at TUA, and they're fine with the electric loading data being provided after the site plan has been approved, they just need to know that prior to the building actually being attached to the electric grid, and staff recommends approval of the site plan with the included DAC comments.
All right.
Just, just to clarify, too, it's actually AL, assisted living and memory care, yeah.
So if you don't mind me asking, how many, how many residents do you expect to build up help there?
How many residents?
Fifty-six assisted living and 23 memory care.
Thank you, that's really great.
And we have some plans for additional memory care when the deal arises.
Yeah, we get asked about that a lot, so appreciate you guys coming in and bringing that project. Thank you.
I have a question, where's this going to be located, again?
It's just north of the existing facility.
So if you're facing NHC just to the right.
It's on the same property.
Okay, okay.
That wooded area.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Entertaining motion?
I'll move to approve that, subject staff comments.
Second, second.
All right, motion from Mr. Seaborn, and second from Mr. Hall, any discussion on this? My only real comment was, I had to look through the drawings, the comment from the city engineer about the sidewalk going to the north, why does, it does not go over to the south side of the property, does that need to change?
Yeah, I think that was a Public Works comment, so I'm not sure as far as the reasoning behind that, other than, you know, I know as a standard at this point, they try to cover a property, you know, border to border, you know, with sidewalk.
Yeah, it looked like, it looked like the sidewalk ended on the north drive, which was the property line essentially, on the south side, it goes to nothing, but, you know, there's no, there's no terminus, terminus there, and I believe that's within our standards to go property to property, otherwise, we're never going to get any sidewalks anywhere.
Yeah, that's, that's the idea behind it, is you cover property to property.
So this is on the Cedar Lane facing side of the building, I assume, for the sidewalks?
Yes.
And remind me, I can't remember, there are sidewalks on the existing building, I didn't think so, so, but we are trying to connect that stuff north to into the shopping centers and such.
All right. And I do believe there are sidewalks north up there, too, but I'm not positive, I know that there are sidewalks with that new development.
There's some.
Well, yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Slowly but surely.
I don't think we really want our residents walking anywhere.
Yeah, it's for public access.
All right, I'd like to ask that, but my hands are tied, so.
You made the motion, you want to add that to the motion, he's asking to add that to it.
You made the motion.
Oh, I made the motion, okay, yeah, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, all right, add to the, add to the notes to extend the sidewalk to the south side.
Just to clarify, sidewalks from basically the frontage of our, the new project, not the entire?
Yes, yes.
Yes, the entire length?
Just, just the, the, the frontage of this, Cedar Lane frontage of this existing site plan, of this site plan that you have proposed today.
Okay, so just the new development, not the existing building? I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, it's a good.
That is not, that is not within our purview.
Okay, thank you.
It's part of the DAC comments, it was, I think, subject.
Right, yeah, 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 but that, that comment, yeah, only, only said to the north side, so, anyway, okay, all right, thank you, so we're going to add, do we have that noted? Okay, all right, that's my only issue, other than that, looks good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else from the commission? All right, I'll call the vote, all in favor of the, of the proposed site plan, subject to staff comments with the sidewalk addition, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained, all right, motion passes six to zero. All right. Site plan, item number two, the lofts at Teleahoma Site Plan, a site plan for a 96-unit apartment complex located at 1020 Old Estle Springs Road, applicant is New Doors Development LLC, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and speak on their development. Sir, you're recognized, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, my name is Lucas Langton with Alliance Engineering, also I have William Perser, our professional engineer from Alliance Engineering, we're here to present a 98-unit apartment complex on Old Estle Springs Road, there is existing one house on one property separated by two tracts, and we are proposing to add, again, the apartment complex, the necessary storm water management resources, obviously a dry path, path to get to the complex, parking spaces enough to deem appropriate for, per the, per the ruling, and sidewalks connecting all of the way around the property as well as sidewalks on either side on Washington Street as well as Old Estle, and have, have a plan package together with all the planning profile sheets, every, everything for all the utilities, have worked with Public Works, engineering, planning through the DAC committee, it's been a very good process, our first time working here in Tallahassee, and we look forward to continuing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had to, I had it loaded up on my iPad there, but it decided it was not going to, didn't like it.
So I have one comment, if he's new in town, he has to learn how to pronounce Estle.
All right, all right, with that, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite anyone from the public to come forward at this time to speak on this. There was some movement in the back there, but I guess now I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Luthy, the staff report, please.
Yeah, this is a project located at 1020 Old Estle Springs Road, I accidentally put 96 units, it's 96 units in the four-story buildings and two units in the one-story building, when I was originally reading the document, I saw the 96, but I did not catch that there was two additional below that, so I do apologize, this one, I remember this applicant came to us in March, I believe, originally, we spoke to them, they met with our DAC group and got some comments on their initial design, and then they went back with those comments and made some revisions, then they've resubmitted now, they submitted to us in June, and then our Planning Commission got a chance, or, excuse me, our Design Advisory Committee got a chance to look at that, and they gave, were able to review it and give them some more comments, and they made some revisions to comply with those comments, really the predominant amount of comments that we got were revolving around the dumpster enclosures and having to access those, if you look at them, they're at an angle at the front entrance of each of the arms of parking that extend down between the four sets of buildings, and there was some back and forth there, making sure that those curb radii were enough so that the trucks could get in and out without running over the curbs and still access those dumpsters, and there was a brief back and forth for the wastewater detention area and the requirements for that, but those comments have been answered, as well as Public Works has been satisfied with the placement of the dumpsters and the radius that the curbs provide, Public Works thinks the trucks will be able to get in and out without issue, and outside of that, all the other comments we have have been complied with, and this project seems to bring some much-needed apartments here and will develop an area of town that could need some development, so staff recommends approval of this project with the included DAC comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy, motion?
Motion to approve, subject staff comments.
Second. All right, discussion on this?
So I kind of have a coordination discussion, so this is not really relevant necessarily to approval, but what's your timeline for getting this facility built, roughly speaking?
Be about a year from once we get started.
We might want to have some discussion later about, so we just have some plans to do some new road paving in Tallahassee and Estle Springs Highway there, Old Estle Springs Highway, I believe, is at the top of our priority list, it may be paved this fall, and I would really, really like not to see large trucks turning up the new pavement, so if we can, if we can, if we can work access off of the back of that, so we can keep the big trucks off of that, nice new pavement, that would be, that would be appreciated, but if we, we'll coordinate that later, but you guys at the tables here, try to help me remember that, because a year from now, who knows if we'll even remember that or not.
All right.
We've had that issue a lot with, usually it's the utility companies we're picking on and cutting holes in it, but.
Is it intended to connect to Washington Street or is it dead end there?
No, it dead ends, and there is a turnaround that we did have the fire department and the Public Works Department looked at, and that turnaround is sufficient for both of those vehicles, but it does not cut through to Washington.
May I ask why?
Yeah, that was going to be my question. Because that's going to dump a lot of traffic out in this one spot on Estle Springs, right near that curve, which if they could go down to Jaeger Street, there'd be a little bit of traffic relief. So the biggest, the biggest answer to why is because it creates an actual road through, and so we had our, our traffic control, traffic company do the transportation calculations, and we do have a.
Yeah.
Recommendations at the end.
From the traffic report, you know, sort of a twofold thing, one, if the roadway connected both Old Estle and Washington, that would have required the road going through to be a public roadway, and in some of our, some of our discussions, both with our client and with the city, they felt that that would not necessarily be a good thing for that type of development, and then as far as the traffic study goes, the amount of traffic that would be put out onto Old Estle would be minimal, it wouldn't have a major impact to the roadway.
And let me also say that, so, I'm sorry, it's my comment.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
There's an industrial zone right back there, we'd probably be encouraging lots of people trying to get to work to cut through that apartment complex to get to work.
So, so this is not, this is not a public road?
No.
No city maintenance on this?
Yeah, I can watch that, too.
Okay, okay, yeah, so the maintenance is a responsibility of the landlord, or the landowner, I guess, yeah, okay, all right, thank you, that's it, that satisfies myself.
We might want to think about if it's, might need a turn lane off of Estle into there, I mean, that's 96 lots, 96 units is a lot, if it.
If it causes, you know, that's a pretty congested area where that V's in there. I don't know if that's something to think about. It'd be on our, on our end, but I mean, mayor, that's something we might wanna look at in planning. We, we can think about that. I mean, I think that's, you know, we have trust the traffic studies to some extent on that sort of thing. I mean, there's a good bit of traffic through there, but it's the turnout traffic that matters, I think.
Yeah, the, the intersection up the, up the way from there is questionable, in my opinion, but I mean, there was some traffic data and, and actually there's some, there's some, there is some stuff in here about how they're gonna re-stripe it and stuff like that. I don't know if that's.
That's what I was gonna mention. If you look on the layout sheet, we do have a inset showing where, where we proposed restriping of the area, just to kinda, 'cause I, I know that coming off of that more main road onto Old Estill, there's a very slight right turn off of it if you're coming from the city and so we're trying to more pronounce the striping where you can't, hopefully nobody will jump over five, fifty feet of striping to go straight on to Old Estill, basically. So, that will.
I mean, that's what happens today. I mean.
Yeah.
I drive it every day, so.
Right. Maybe the striping will help.
I don't know. Good luck. All right. No, that, that whole intersection is kind of, yeah, there's, there's, it's wonky there. We have similar thing on the other side of town too, so. All right, any other, anything else from the commission? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the lofts at Toluoma site plan, subject to staff comments, which, what were the staff comments again? I'm sorry. I've lost my train of thought. Do you have any staff comments?
Yes, the staff comments on this one are boilerplate comments for the completed long-term maintenance plan and storm water detention maintenance agreement provided to the planning and codes department so that those can be recorded as well as two hard copies need to be provided so that we can distribute those to the requisite departments. And then Elk River does have a comment that there is a service line to the existing home on ten twenty Old Estle Springs and they will have to terminate that service prior to demolition of the home and Elk River would just like that noted so that they're covered when that home goes to be demolished.
All right, thank you. Yeah, sorry, that kinda, all right, all in favor of the, of the site plan? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained. All right, motion passes, again, six to zero. All right, thank you. And, all right, with that, we are at the end of our agenda for the planning commission, so the planning commission is now adjourned and we will move to the.
Yes, I'd like to make a brief comment before we begin the BOMA agenda.
It's all yours.
I would just like to advise the commission that, as you can see by our current agenda, these are getting quite large with these site plan submittals and it's not in the spirit of, of conservation to be printing out a hundred and five-page packet every month. So, I would like to advise the commission, you should all have an iPad or an electronic device. I'm working with our IT department to get your city emails working, so you will have a, a, a planning commission email that will be assigned to you that will then, will get those logged into on the iPad. That way, when we have these meetings, when the agenda goes live, you'll get an email with a link where you can download a PDF copy of that agenda and get it loaded up on your device. And then anything else that comes in relating to the planning commission will go to that email. That way, you can kinda keep it, it separated and have a place where everything and all correspondence from the city to you will be included in that email. And that way, we can hopefully switch to a paperless meeting because these are, you know, when it's one or two site plans, it's one thing, but we've got, you know, three site plans and, and a bunch of subdivisions on there, it, it gets quite extensive to print all that information out. So, we were thinking that, that going paperless with that would be beneficial to all parties.
No, that's, I like that, that was the, that was the original plan with the iPads anyway, but this is an average one, I feel like. But, all right, no, that's good. I would ask for myself that I have at least the agenda printed out so that I can take notes on it, if, if that's doable, if that's a reasonable requirement.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still print paper copies of the, just the agenda itself without all of the submitted materials, but those submitted materials will be viewable on your iPad, so you'll have those electronically.
That'd be great, thank you. And preferred, honestly. Although I can't get my thing working today, so. All right, with that, we're adjourned, we're adjourned from the planning commission and I will call to order the, the, the board of zoning, the board of zoning and appeals regular meeting. Reading and approving the minutes from the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five board of zoning and appeals meeting. I will entertain a motion for minutes as written.
Motion approved.
From Mr. Sellers.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hall. I'll call a vote on the minutes. All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. Motion, minutes as written, six to zero. Approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Move from Mr. Seaborn. Second from Mr. Comer. All in favor as the agenda is written? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. All right, the agenda is approved, six to zero. There is no old business. We do have new business tonight, variance request. These are public hearings. The Ying. I should have asked for pronunciation problems.
Yang.
Ying, Yang, Dong, variance request. Thank you. A request has been made by applicant to grant a variance for, for two eleven Hickerson Circle regarding lot orientation. I'd like to invite the applicant at this time. May I be recognized? Thank you. Sorry about the name.
It's Yang, just call him Yang, it's time. He is wanting a variance to put a duplex at two eleven Hickerson Circle. I think it's already zoned R2, but it lacked just a little bit of property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite anyone that would like to speak on this at this time. All right, closed public hearing. Mr. Luthy for the staff report. Thank you.
Yeah, so, the applicant approached me with this lot and he wanted to, there's an existing duplex there and he wanted to expand that duplex and improve it and renovate it. One of the difficulties with this lot is that per our ordinance, lot frontage is determined as the section of the lot that fronts the public right-of-way. This lot technically fronts a public right-of-way, but it's an unimproved public right-of-way and so, you know, he can't take access from it, he can't drive down it. It's, it's grown up with grass, it was never expanded or, or built out as a road. Hickerson Circle actually turns and, and goes past this right-of-way and doesn't continue on down it. And the current duplex on there is oriented where it is facing what would be considered by ordinance a side lot line and there's a driveway that runs down the lot north-south that currently serves that duplex. If we orient the lot as if the front of the lot is facing the driveway, which is how the current duplex is oriented and which is how access would be oriented, the lot does meet the required lot width for R2, for him to renovate or expand or build a new duplex on there. So, the variance that we're asking for is just to allow the lot to be oriented facing the existing driveway and, and the front of the lot be determined to be the front of the lot as it currently stands with the existing building instead of as our ordinance requires it, which would be rotated ninety degrees, which makes this lot non-compliant.
Understood. All right, thank you. Entertained a motion?
I'll move to approve that.
Motion for Mr. Mayor Seaborn, second.
Second.
All right, discussion. This is a fair variance, it meets the, it meets the specifications. The, I'll call, call a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained. Motion passes for the variance, six to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your development. All right, item number two, Joe Denby variance request. A request has been made by the applicant to grant a variance for four seventeen West Wagner Street, Wagner Street regarding lot width. The applicant?
Not the applicant, but the land surveyor hired by Mr. Denby. My name's Andy Best. I, in the, so, Mr. Denby bought two lots, or he actually bought four lots on Wagner Street. One of them was left of the four seventeen, it was on four thirteen Wagner Street and then there was a, a mobile home, a single wide on four fifteen and then four seventeen was a vacant lot. We got out there, started doing the survey, realized that the property line for four fifteen runs through the middle of the trailer, through the middle of the single wide. So, and this single wide, we think, was there since nineteen seventy-three. And so, what we're asking, what we're, we're doing is we put a revision plat through Sam's office to shift that lot line that the, that the trailer's on so that his trailer will be on his lot and the line will be going through the middle of the trailer. What that does is it creates the lot that's to the right of the trailer lot. It makes it to where it's not a legal lot by width and so we're asking for a, a variance to solve this problem that we've discovered from fifty years ago, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing. I'd like to invite anyone from the public to speak on this at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to Mr. Luthy for the staff report. Mr. Luthy, thank you.
Yeah. So, this has already summed up pretty well for you. I'd just like to add that the resulting lot being thirty-five feet in width would not be dissimilar from similar lots in the area. There's a lot of long skinny lots in this, on West Wagner Street, so it would not be out of character for this part of the city. And it is, you know, in my opinion, is a, a, it qualifies for, for being granted a variance because it does save the existing property owner who has his trailer undue hardship of having to have that trailer removed and also saves Mr. Denby undue hardship from having to give up a lot that he purchased in order for this gentleman to keep his, his home. So, you know, I, in reviewing it and, and checking the five findings we have to make, I did not find any reason why this variance should be denied.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Luthy. Motion?
Make a motion.
Motion for Mr. Hall. Second?
Second.
Make Marvin second, at least some tonight.
Any discussion on this? I think the, the telling thing is basically it matches the rest of the neighborhood, so I think we're good here. All right, with that, I'll call a vote. Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. And opposed and abstained. All right, variance is granted, six to zero. Good luck, Mr. Denby, on that. And with that, we are adjourned. The next meeting will be August eighteenth at four thirty in this room. Thank you.[1769.76]